So the work session will go over the agenda. Get into the, open up the meeting with the official call to order. And we'll do our student recognition, public recognition, and then we'll do the vote. And then we have the break for an executive session thereafter. So we'll begin going over the agenda, starting with the approval of minutes, number five. We have our treasurer's report. Number seven is our approval of bills. Number eight is our accounting of taxes. Then following that, we will have our two students present. We also have public recognition thereafter. Number 11 is our enrollment report, which our total for the month is at 1806, total student population. Number 12 is fuel oil purchase. This would authorize our business manager to solicit bids for the purchasing of fuel oil for the 22, 23 school year. 23 is a tax rebate, real estate tax rebate from this current school year in the amount of $171.51 for a property in Clinton Township as a result of an appeal.
Matt, I have a question. Not so much on this one.
Yes.
But who represents the school district when people go for tax rebates? And I'm taught this because of the large mall and senior center in Hamlin that costs millions to build and then they get the tax reduced to a million dollars worth of value. Who represents our school at these meetings?
Well, typically it would go through the solicitor, correct?
Solicitor traditionally has been the county's solicitor that agrees with appeal and representing the rebate. This one, the county solicitor.
I think we need to look into supplying some kind of role representation when it comes to high dollars.
Okay. It's more district represented council rather than county level council.
Yes.
Okay. We will look into that, Gary. Thank you. Okay, we have, 13 was tax rebate. 14 is revision of board policy. This is an update. We do annual reviews of our policies, update them if necessary according to any legal parameters or recommendations from the School Board Association. 15, we have three new drivers. The contractors, Dennis, Karu, and Henwood. 16 is a new contract, which is taking over for a contract that was given up by Isansky Bussing. And that's through Gary Dennis. Number 17 is a contract extension. This is for the student needing transportation mid-morning from Lake Ariel to the high school. Number 18, our two overnight trips for our robotics club. First one's coming up in Bridgewater, Reverton High School in New Jersey. The second one, that's the district competition. And then the second competition is in April, April 1st through the 3rd at Ben Salem High Number 19 is the approval of the curriculum guide for the 22, 23 school year. That's at the high school. Number 23 is an agreement with Keystone Depp and Heart of Hearing for students that need those services for the remainder of the school year. 21, our waivers of expulsion as listed for students for disciplinary infractions. 22, we have personnel. 22A is a cafeteria substitute, Dawn Oliver. Letter B is two resignations, food service, Sue Poller, and Moore Ukezi, FCC LA advisor. And that's for the second semester of this current school year. Letter C, we have appointment of spring coaches. So these are the remaining positions we had open for this coming spring season. We have softball assistant coach, Candy Rhodes, and Steve Robinsky for baseball junior high. Letter D is the appointment of fall coaches for the 22, 23 school year. Football cheerleading, cross-country, golf, soccer, volleyball as listed, as well as the years of service and salaries that coincide. Letter E, we have appointment of advisors. These are the results of resignations or retirements. These are for the remainder of the 21, 22 school year. We have middle school student government, FCC LA, as well as custodian of student accounts, again with the salaries as listed. Letter F, we have an appointment for the food service. I'm sorry, is that?
Robert P. Wilson.
And that is as a result of the resignation. Letter G, we have volunteer for junior high baseball. And then 23, we have informational items. I'm sorry, we also have two juniors, two volunteers for junior high baseball. 23 are informational items for the month of March, sports physicals, VIP presentation at Evergreen, PMEA regional band, pre-K kindergarten registration at RDN Evergreen. We have a bus evacuation drill coming up mid-over of the month. We have an act 80 day on March 18th, which is a new dismissal drama club, cast breakfast drive-through, high school parking lot on March 19th. And then March 24th through the 26th is the PMA regional chorus event. And letter B, we just wanted to take a moment. I guess we could wait for the official meeting to know that the hideout has a, we'd like to reach out and thank them for their donations to food and personal hygiene products to the district food pantry, but we'll repeat that so it's on record. Correspondence, administrative reports, federal reports, other business, and future meetings coming up, potentially March 30th. And then for work session, April 6th for public board meeting. If necessary, we may combine those and have both on the same evening depending on the nature and quantity of the line items for those meetings. And then we did have an executive session following last month's meeting for personnel and legal matters.
Dr. Gerit, can I also bring up, I know April is usually when we do a narrative budget presentation.
Yes.
And I've wanted to ask the board if April 20th would be a decent date for everybody to check their calendar. It's a Wednesday night, it's Wednesday, April 20th for the budget presentation. No, we separateize it and we put it on that April agenda as a future date because it's regular meetings before that.
I think we're gonna, as we have been looking through a block vote tonight for number 12 through 22G, does anyone have any that they, especially the 22s are all hiring, does anybody have any, anybody or any of those that they'd like to pull on individually or separately out of the block? And then I have questions on number 12, fuel oil purchase question. None of us have a crystal ball, but we know that fuel oil's through the roof right now. So I don't know what if, I just asked Rose potentially if she can kind of shop around a little bit but not tie us in until when? That was April?
We do by April, May. You'd be okay, I could wait a little bit before actually do the bidding.
I don't know if anybody has any insight into that or any idea what's the best way to approach that.
I don't know if waiting is a good idea.
What, pardon me?
I'm not sure waiting is a good idea.
I know, yeah, that's what I'm asking. I don't know if it's something we want to try to roll the dice with and see where it goes or if we want to jump right on it. They typically, when they lock the price in, if it does drop, do they give us that? I don't recall how that, it's that price period.
Either way, whether it goes up or down. Last year we did, the only bids we received were for fluctuating prices, like above whatever the market value was for a certain date. We had regulations for that, so we weren't locked in to a certain dollar amount for the full year of this current year, it fluctuates.
Okay.
And that's what this one is for as well?
I did not bid it yet, so we asked for both, bid both ways when we put the bid out. This past year, we only received fluctuating prices.
Rose, do you remember a couple of years ago, a local company that we accepted, did they ever put bids, remember at all?
Yes, I know we have received some bids from local.
Recently, no, I never really figured it out.
So I guess we'll go with that as it is and let those people kind of choose how to roll the dice. I mean, fluctuating wouldn't really matter anyway, correct? Does anybody have any others that they want to discuss further or hold out? Just going back to, if we do the meeting on the 20th, we can probably then combine potentially the work session that evening, I didn't have it until 20th or 30th, and then April 6th?
It's April, April 23rd you were saying though?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, April.
No, I'm sorry, April.
I'm not behind you. My apologies, never mind then, yes.
No, April is a better month just because we have a little bit better idea of where we're going to be.
Thank you, Russ. Okay, nothing else? Mr. Hope?
Okay.
All right, we call the regular meeting of the Western Wayne Board to order. We'll start with a prayer and pledge of allegiance. Please grant us as always the ability to make decisions that are in the best interest of all, amen. Pledge of allegiance.
This is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose stand is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, send up the roll call, please.
Mr. Hope?
Here.
Mrs. Duceyado?
Here.
Mr. Gogolski?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Enslin?
Here.
Mr. Gershey?
Here.
Mr. Gambida?
Here.
Mr. Ocklin?
Here.
Mr. Wood?
Here.
Attorney Ellis?
Here.
Dr. Barrett?
Here.
Dr. LaRosa?
Here.
Ms. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Gogorski?
Excuse?
Mrs. Bradley?
Here.
Mr. Pidgen?
Here.
Mrs. Miller? Ms. Watson?
Here.
Mr. Barr?
Here.
Mrs. Fitzsimmons?
Here.
Mr. Knight?
Excuse, as is Dr. Schenzen.
Mrs. Gregory?
Here.
Mrs. Liptat?
Here.
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
And Mr. Blatt?
Is here.
Mr. Hope, you have nine board members.
Thank you. We'll move on to number five, the approval of minutes. I have a motion for that, please, for the board's work session and the regular board meeting.
I'll make that motion that we approve the minutes of the regular board work session and the board work session and regular board meeting, which were both held on February 9th, 2022.
Okay, that motion was made by Mr. Gershey and seconded by Mr. Gambida. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed by saying no? Any extensions? Motion carries on to number six, the treasurer's reports for the general account and food service account.
I move to accept the treasurer's reports for the general and food service accounts.
I'll second.
All right, that motion was made by Mr. Gogolski and seconded by Mr. Wood. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed by saying no? Are there any extensions? Motion carries. Number seven, the approval of bills.
I need for the approval of bills for the general and food service account.
I'll second.
That motion also was made by Mr. Gogolski and seconded by Mr. Wood. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed by saying no? Any extensions? Motion carries. Is there anything on the accounting of taxes? Student recognition tonight, Mr. Barr will take care of that.
Thank you, Mr. President. So tonight, we'd like to recognize two outstanding seniors and their accomplishments while here at Western Wayne. First, we'd like to recognize Morgan Heenan. Morgan is the daughter of Barbara and Chris Heenan of Waymore, PA.
Good evening. First, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Education for the chance to speak today. The decisions you all make collectively directly affect me and my classmates on many levels. Your foresight and dedication to the student body at Western Wayne helps to propel us to becoming the best version of ourselves. I would also like to firstly thank Mr. Gogorski for his support, for allowing me to speak here tonight. I appreciate this honorable opportunity greatly. Being a member of a very competitive class, I've learned to push, motivate, and support my classmates and consistently strive to be the best version of myself both inside and outside of the classroom. The teachers within the school have worked hard to continue to challenge us, create an environment that rewards our efforts and collaborations. The culture at Western Wayne celebrates all their individual accomplishments and our accomplishments as a class. Their tradition of well-being pride is something I'm proud to be a part of. Throughout my high school career, I've indulged in multiple after-school activities. I'm a three-year member of the National Honor Society, as well as a three-year member of FBLA, where I have placed at states consecutively all three years. I'm the current senior class treasurer and have helped to create our high school yearbook as well as organize our junior form. The tremendous efforts made by the Board of Education, faculty, and staff to keep our school open safely have made being a student athlete feasible at all certain times. After putting my hand in many different sports, I have found my place with varsity cheerleading, which I have done since basketball season of my sophomore year. I have cheered on the varsity basketball cheer team for three years, earning the title of captain both my junior and senior year. I have also done varsity football cheerleading both my junior and senior year, earning the position of a captain as a senior. Being on this team has given me the opportunity to be a leader and influence the lives of young minds. I would especially like to thank our coach, Camper Clubbody, for giving me the opportunity to develop my leadership skills, for pushing me to become the best version of myself as I navigated through the seasons. With your support and encouragement, I wouldn't be the cheerleader on my first night and today. We have always emphasized the importance of being a student before we were an athlete and celebrate the accomplishments we made both in the classroom and within our team. So for that, I sincerely thank you. Throughout my years at Western Wayne, there are many teachers I would like to acknowledge for shaping the student I have become. My elementary school teachers such as Ms. Kelly Glenn, Mrs. Jessica Mello, and Mr. Wanto Masoney treated us, each of us with kindness and respect, while also beginning to install a love of writing and learning. Moving into middle school, teachers such as Mr. Rao and our guidance counselor, Mr. Joe Toxey, allowed me to grow into myself and gain my confidence as a student. Understanding who I was and all that I was capable of made the anticipation of high school less intimidating. And after coming to high school, I have made relationships with teachers that I will respect, such as Mr. Butler, Ms. Masekhat, Mrs. McClure, Ms. Carey, Mr. Olson, Mrs. McConie Angeli, Ms. Rush, and our incredible guidance counselors, Mr. Fitzsimmons, and Ms. Scribble. Thanks to these teachers, these past four years have given me the opportunity to grow in the classroom and become a personal freshman year I didn't know was possible. However, I would like to give a special thank you to Mr. Martin O'Hara. Being in his classroom has given me the opportunity to find my life's passion, as he continued to teach and push me into expanding my horizons in a field I thrive in. Thanks to him, I have learned that a hobby can become a career with the right amount of motivation and passion. Although I didn't get to spend all four years with him, he has taught and impacted my life as he has made me realize the only way to be successful is to love what you're doing. All of these teachers have remained a support system throughout the high school years, gave me the drive to continue on in my academic career. And to my parents, I owe everything that I am to you. I wouldn't be the person that I am today without your guidance and unconditional love and support. All the life lessons and hard learnings have given me the strength and tools to survive on my own. And to my brothers, without you, I wouldn't have the courage to set the course in my own life. Thank you for your selfless and heroic acts that inspire me to live each and every day to its fullest potential. The support of family means shared experience and shared accomplishments, so I thank you. Finally, I would like to thank my lifelong friends for unconditional support and encouragement throughout our elementary, middle, and high school years. The memories we've made keep us connected to the school and help us to remember all that it means to be a Western Wayne law cap. As I move on in my academic career, I will carry with me the immense pride and lessons that evolved within the walls of Western Wayne. In the fall, I will be attending Penn State University, working towards a bachelor's degree in digital journalism and media. Western Wayne taught me that with the right amount of dedication and incentive, following your passion is the only sensible option for a successful future. The personal and professional relationships I have cultivated here have taught me invaluable lessons. Everything from time management to courage to stand up for my convictions and how to be the best and get the best from the people I work with. When teachers, coaches, and administrators take a personal interest in the development of their students, it makes all the difference in who they are and who they want to become. Within the walls of Western Wayne, small-town kids from Wayne County are turned into young men and women with drive and diligence to pursue the life that is waiting for them. This school gives us the tools to adapt and reverse the inevitable change that we are all about to face, and that's what truly makes me proud to be a law cap.
Thank you, Morgan. Our next student that we'd like to recognize tonight is Ryan Benton. Ryan is the son of Kelly and Ryan Benton of Waymore, PA.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ryan Benton, and thank you for having me. I'd like to take a moment to thank the Board of Education for my opportunities provided at Western Wayne. I'd also like to thank my parents, because I'm grateful for their love and support throughout my life. A little info about me, I've played basketball for three years, soccer and baseball for four years, along with being the captain of the soccer and basketball teams my senior year. I enjoyed learning from my teammates and the excellent coaches I've had throughout the years. I'm currently looking forward to playing baseball this season. I love the opportunities that have been awarded to me throughout my sports journey at Western Wayne. Leadership, sportsmanship, and camaraderie are a few things that I've learned and developed as a result of their guidance and support. Recently, there's an article in the paper about my basketball season and the person I am on and off the court. I was so honored that my hard work had been noticed and the others were proud of my accomplishments. I'm also the treasurer for our FBLA club, a proud member of the National Honor Society, a scholastic senior, and for short term was a part of the Roll Lions club. These clubs have offered me ways to showcase my talents. Along with in-school activities, I also donate my time to the food pantry of my grandmother. I also served my church as an altar server for many years before COVID. I also have employed at the Waymore Borough during maintenance, and I'll keep up the era and take great pride in serving my community. Throughout my high school career, I've been on first honors every quarter. I've taken advantage of the opportunities at Western Wayne so I can be prepared for my future by taking multiple honors and AP courses every year. In the future, my plans are to attend a four-year university majoring in civil engineering, possibly with a minor in computer science. I'm either going to attend Pitt or Penn State, and Western Wayne's school district teachers, coaches, and guidance counselors and my family have given me the tools I need to be successful once I graduate. I'm honored and appreciative of this recognition, and thank you for having me as one of your
I'd just like to thank them again, and if we could, have their parents stay in to be recognized as well.[1454.56][1454.56][applause]
All right, thank you. As always, Morgan and Ryan, it's great to hear about your success here, and we wish you the best in your future endeavors. And then state's only halfway, Pitt's all the way. Big difference there in how far you have to travel. Good luck. All right, next we have, moving forward to recognition of the public. We'll try to limit this to about 15 minutes. Is there anyone that has any comments? Can you please just say your name and where you're from?
Do you want me to stand over there?
You can, wherever you like, that's fine.
Hi, everybody. My name's Katie Foley. A letter from the owner of Lake Janero. I'm here representing Lake Janero, which is a 44-acre campground right across the hideout community on Hamlin Highway. It was purchased recently by Kevin Kearns, who's a world-renowned safety expert. So he bought it in June of 2021, and he's already made some amazing renovations to the neglected grounds. Through Kevin's reach and commitment to the community, he hopes that the community will find Lake Janero as a desired destination for future functions, community endeavors, and tourism. So our goal is to renovate the property to be a fully functioning venue and campground where the community can gather, have fun, meet people. So through the excess of Lake Janero, we want to contribute 10% of all of our proceeds with our events yearly directed back to the communities that we serve. In the last six months, we saw a loss of revenue but donated nearly $30 grand to local people in need. So I'm here today to ask how Lake Janero can help local schools, families, and students. We have the ability to accommodate graduation parties, school dances outside, sporting events, fundraisers, overnight camping trips, workshops, and more. Kevin welcomes your input and hopes that you all want to be a community partner. So I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Katie Foley. Again, I'm the assistant manager at Lake Janero. Kevin and I are not from the area, so we want to get to know the community a little bit better. And like I said, our goal is to just give back to those in need. We're having a comedy show, that's our first event, on April 23rd. We're going to have it at Evergreen Hill across from Wyans and Hamlin. And 10% of the proceeds are going to go to Coach Scott Rush. He needs help with some medical bills, and when Kevin found out about his family who's in need, Kevin decided that 10% of the proceeds of this event are going to go to Scott Rush. So I'm here to obviously invite everybody, it's 21 up, sorry, to the event, and I just wanted to share my contact information with everybody. What I ask from you is a list of your events, because we don't want to have any events on the same day to take away from your attendance. And any way that Lake Janero can help you, you know, Kevin and I, who couldn't be here today, but we want to help the community and just, you know, grow together. It's really cheesy, but. So that's much feel. I have for the 12 of you, just our, you know, our mission, a list of some of the events that we have coming up and an invitation to the comedy show, if you don't mind.
Sure, absolutely.
I distribute that.
I want to just leave them up here, we'll pass it now.
Yeah, sure, that would be great.
And if you'd like to reach out.
Yeah, all my information is there. I don't know if I could get an email contact with somebody to, you know.
So you're already contacting me? So I'm Dana Duceyado, so I'm been in touch with.
Okay, you're Dana. Yes, nice to meet you.
And Kevin as well in regards to the comedy show.
Great, great.
We actually will be reaching out to you in regards to the wrestling banquet to hold there. And our little kid wrestling banquet is also going to be reaching out, but I can pass that information on to Dr. Barrett.
I know we're already having a PTO bake sale. A woman named Ashley wanted to coordinate that, but hopefully this is just first of many events that we have that can benefit, you know, those in need and want to work with the school. Again, I'm new to the area, so hello, everybody.
Welcome, and thank you.
Thank you for having me, thank you for your time.
It's always great when there's any growth.
Yeah, that's what we want.
District or in the region, so we appreciate all the wonderful stuff.
Thank you. Everybody, thanks.
I forgot before we started, public comment, if anybody, any of the young folks or your parents would like to leave, you're welcome to stay and enjoy the rest of the meeting. It'd be a great time if you want to sneak out now, you're welcome to do that too, so you're welcome to stay as well. Is there anyone else that's got any, anything from the public that would like to speak?
Please.
Please, just for the record.
Sure.
Quite your name.
Dr. Amanda Johnson. Item 14, I know you're planning on doing a block.
Yes.
For that. I know that we can find that information under the board documents, but how do we know what you're going to update before the meeting so that we can see? Because there are copies, and I see there's quite a bit of information there. How is it possible for us to see what's going to be changed, what annual updates?
We could probably provide you with a copy of the prior version.
I have a copy because they're available, so then, but I'm just wondering, what kind of language are we changing? Like, if you go in under the other documents, like legal documents, they always show. they always show what they've altered on there, but we don't have any information here in our agenda?
Well, if you have a copy of the old version and a copy of the new version, you could reference it.
I don't have a copy of the new version. I'd like to know what is being...
Oh, you'll be able to...
I know, but I want to know what you're going to change. That's how the agenda's supposed to work, right? So we kind of have an idea of what was being changed prior to the vote, please?
This is the...
One is the pupils, the 200?
Yes, here's a copy of the proposal. Basically, just updating, because the last time it was updated was 2014. So we're looking at any legal terminology we needed to update and to basically provide parameters for the district to work in when it comes to searches, as well as any protections for students that were required to afford.
Okay, would it change anything in relationship to having the home language survey? Or is that still part of the... It says that the district shall administer a home language survey to all students enrolling in the district. Is that part of the changes? Do we have any...
I don't believe that's the correct policy you're looking at.
200 is pupils, right? The actual section is the 226 section, specifically for searches.
Oh, you're just doing 226?
Yes, correct, no. Just one specific section, so if you go into the list...
The one for searches?
Correct.
Anything there that a parent or a member of the community would find to be dramatic? Is there any way for you to... Because I see it's a very large amount of things to do.
That has been vetted by attorneys as well as the Pennsylvania School Board Association. So we take recommendations, we look at other board policies compared to ours, and we update it as we see necessary.
So now, does the Pennsylvania School Board Association have what you will be putting into ours ahead of time? Is that how we could see what's going on?
So we do submit it to them, yes. And then those provide us with any updated language that we need to... So we...
We go through one or two, a couple of these annually, and then they usually make recommendations based on current stuff. And since this wasn't since 14, so, you know, eight years out, it's time to just touch it up a little. And it's usually just mild language. If it's anything real big, we usually talk about it in good...
Because I see it's quite a bit of really important stuff, like searching for dangerous items and drugs.
Necessary language.
Things for safety.
Yes, correct.
Okay, so to your reckoning, there are no major changes in the school district's searches? Or are we changing anything regarding... Because we're having a bit of problems in the country with extra drugs coming into the country?
That's also part of why we are looking at this, so that we have the ability to do searches when we have suspicion of something, reasonable suspicion.
Right, correct.
And that it does set up parameters that we need to work within so that legally, you know, we're making sure we're doing it properly.
And I didn't see any kind of a schedule as to the types of searches? Like, are we taking advantage of the local dogs?
We do, and we have in the past. So those are things that, yes, will be covered under this.
Okay, what currently are we doing as far as the use of the dogs in this school district? Are we doing like once a year?
Randomly, we would have to come in throughout the course of a year.
Monthly or less than monthly?
It's not scheduled, and it's not monthly. We don't want it to be regular because it should be random so that we could potentially...
One a year, two a year?
Typically, it's usually at least one or two.
One or two a year, okay. Has the board discussed the possibility that we have? Because everybody knows you can't get away from it, it's in the news all the time. There are truckloads of things that are going on, and we have tremendous amounts of deaths with fentanyl overdoses. Has the board talked about the possibility that maybe to protect our kids, that maybe we should increase somehow the number of dogs that are coming in to save our kids from getting caught up in this accidentally, not necessarily on purpose, getting caught up in this new risk that we have in our area? If we only needed to do...
I haven't talked about the increase of dogs, I can tell you that right now. That hasn't been talked about. But something like this should probably be talked about with less voice so that it's not... How can I say it? So that the whole district is not, so to speak, aware of the day that this is going to happen.
No, I'm saying it's for the day.
It's not, right? Is that kind of what you're asking me to think?
No, no, no. I mean more like instead of you would normally consider it really important to do it twice a year if we're seeing an increase...
Well, that's something we wouldn't probably talk about really out loud if we were going to increase it, right? So we wouldn't be, right? I don't think so. Do we have to...
You do want the element of surprise.
I'm not saying you should post it on the door that make sure you get all your stuff out of your locker before... I had kids, you don't do that. But what I am saying is that I would like to know if we're going to do anything extra, please?
We're constantly looking at ways to improve our safety and security throughout the buildings, and actually, we just met with the school police officers. We're going to do some staff informational sessions coming up for the next few weeks.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we have seen an increase in base...
But it's just there, it's going on.
Incidents, disciplinary situations that come up. So, yeah, we're concerned, absolutely. And we want to make sure, again, which is why, or the reason we're doing this, is so that we're able to do that.
And then that will be budgeted in through the district in a pre-existing manner? Or is this going to be adding extra cost to the district for the cost of the dogs?
Typically, no, because we work with local law enforcement and/or the state police. Many times both in collaboration.
So that's something they provide for the district as part of their duties?
Yes, it's just a matter of when we can schedule and all the necessary things.
Okay, very good, thank you. And if I could, please, one more item. Number 19, the curriculum guide?
Yes.
I see there's like an outline. I've had some questions from the community. The books, the lesson plans, these things are available or not available to the public?
The curriculum guide is on our website.
And it has like an outline of what the name of the class is, but the actual books that are being used? And what the resources are for the children?
Well, we currently have all of that listed online. I mean, many of them are online because the parents or students use online resources. So that information...
So how would we find out about that information?
You'd have to put in a request or ask.
Okay, so you can't go online onto your webpage and see what books are being used?
Teachers use a variety of curriculum materials, whether it's supplemental. It may not just be a textbook that they're using. Honestly, if a parent or guardian is asking, I would say speak to the teacher about it and have that conversation.
No, the community wants to know too. We want to know. We want to know what's being taught to the kids, just because we're concerned and we like to stay up to date with what's going on. Is there the 1619 project being taught in the school?
Well, again, we follow the Pennsylvania academic standards, and they are listed on the Pennsylvania Department of Education's website.
So you follow their books, or you have your own books that you use?
No, those are standards.
Those are standards that we follow, and we utilize resources to supplement what is taught under those standards.
All right, so if we were to look into that, we would see exactly what books and what types of classes were being followed?
Dr. Johnson, they don't specifically list books. It's standards, it's the material that's being taught, but it's not a specific curriculum or a specific textbook.
Okay, and it's never been like that? You've never been able to see what books are used to educate the children? I know you guys review the books and you approve the books. So if you approve them, you do have a list that you approve?
We would have a comprehensive list throughout the district to put out in front of the public.
But you do approve the material, I know you do. You carefully look over them, you have committees, and you make important decisions.
When we purchase a textbook, it is reviewed, yes. But again, teachers are teaching the standards, and they may choose to supplement.
Yes.
It may extend beyond just a textbook.
Okay, so where would I request a list of the books that are currently being utilized? What department, what...
It depends what you're looking for, because again, within any of the classes in the guide, that may not just be a simple answer of one textbook.
Yeah, I think you've been coming to these meetings for years. We are on kind of a schedule where there's one or two subjects done each year. So they're spaced out over time, so that's why there's probably not a comprehensive. There is at any given time, you've probably got meeting minutes for the last several years that tell you basically all the books that we have, so it changes year by year, so.
Okay, so when we want the information, who will we put that request to? What department?
That could go to me at the right to know.
To you first of all.
Just to be clear, the guide tonight that we are asking for approval, that is done yearly. What the team is working on right now is obviously addressing learning loss that has happened through the pandemic and facilitating communication between all of the teachers. But this guide for the high school, we have a team working to look at our individual departments, and this year's focus for the 2022-23 school year is looking at our technology and engineering program and strengthening what students will be taught and working to strengthen partnerships with our post-secondary schools as well. So that was the major change to this guide. All you're going to see is a realignment in the courses that are being offered.
Because there was another district I was speaking to, and they are now going through all their students to see who may need to be retained due to loss of learning, due to the difficulties with the pandemic?
We have teams in place in all four of our buildings. We have been evaluating that periodically. We have been in school and open longer than, you know, some of the other districts. That is constantly being reevaluated.
Because this district had 50 children in the kindergarten, they're a larger place. They have 50 children that suffered loss of learning due to the restrictions of in-person learning?
And not to belabor the point, we also have implemented tutoring services, after-school programming, programming during the day, supplemental instruction that goes along with a variety of resources that have gone into that currently. Since we came back from 2019, school year.
Right, long two years. Do we feel that we have all of the technology available now if there are any other reasons?
We're very well set with our technology currently.
So each and every family has exactly what they need if there's a misday?
Well, again, it would never be the case. We're working towards that for sure, but we're in a pretty good position considering where we were several years ago.
As compared to what started with the beginning with people going to...
So every student has a device. We assist families securing internet or broadband, and then we provide the teachers generated resources as well.
Do you have an estimate of the number of children? Is it like a 30% increase or a 20% increase that are currently struggling with what happened during loss of learning?
We're not prepared to share a number with you. I can tell you that it is ongoing. There are building-based teams that are meeting child study, it's meeting once a month. There are team meetings that are happening more frequently than that.
Thank you very much, I appreciate the information, thank you.
Is there anyone else? All right, we'll move on. Number 11 is the enrollment report. You can take a look at that now, and we're going to do a block grant, a block concession motion for number 12 through 22G. As long as board members have need to hold out, can I have a motion for that, please?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Ockham, was that you?
Yeah.
Okay, the motion for number 12 through 22G was made by Mr. Gershey and seconded by Mr. Ockham. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed by saying no? Are there any abstentions? Okay, that motion carries. Number 23. That was the informational dates or important dates, informational items, and Dr. Barrett just talked about them at the work session just prior to this meeting. Do we have any correspondence, number 24? Superintendent's report, assistant superintendent's report, principal's report. We've looked at all those. Does anybody have any questions on any of those?
Do you want to circle back to 23B?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
We'd just like to take an opportunity to thank the Hideout for the donations of food and personal hygiene products to our district pantry. Over the holidays, it was a tremendous turnout, so much support from the community. It was really, really, really great to see, and many, many of our families benefited from that. So it was a tremendous effort on both the Hideout and then our staff here to get those grids out to families in need.
We did correspondence, we did those other three, number 20 is federal programs report. Do we have anything on that?
No, just a screen.
Anybody have any other business?
Just one last thing before we go. We do get a banking note to board members, as well as the administration from the Wildcat Wrestling Family, thanking the district for allowing use of the school for the benefit for the Rush family. So it was, again, a great turnout going to the well-needed family. So that was sent today, so we just received that.
Anything else? All right, future meetings, Wednesday, March 30th at 6:00 PM, board work session in the admin building. Wednesday, April 6th will be the public board meeting, also in the admin building, and that is subject to change. We may combine them as we get closer. Meetings held Wednesday, February 9th at 6:00 PM was the board work session, followed by the regular monthly meeting and an executive session for personal and legal after that. Number 31, a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion.
Mr. Enslin, meeting is adjourned.